I will call the meeting of the board to get, uh, to order. And we'll be, uh, I had need to announce to you that at 6:30 we have an executive session concerning personnel. Um, welcome, Mrs. Elder. Mrs. Elder, here. Mr. Howser, here. Mrs. Cottrell, here. Dr. Lachlan, here. Mrs. May, here. Dr. Lachlan, here. Mrs. May, here. Mrs. Paul, here. Dr. Lachlan, here. We did hear from Dr. Zorch and he hadn't had to work this evening, stayed in Nashville. Um, solicitors report, what's your name?
Your report.
Thank you very much. And turn it over to Mrs. Swire.
Thank you. We have a real special occasion this evening. Um, it is, I don't think ever been in my career, uh, that I have an opportunity to recognize, um, a school board member's service, uh, to a district for thirty years. Um, I don't know that many people can talk about doing anything for thirty years, let alone, um, devoting their time, energy, expertise, knowledge, uh, to a school district, in our case, Greater Latrobe. Um, but it is thirty years, uh, that Mrs. Kay Elder, Catherine Elder, has served as a school board member here at Greater Latrobe. And, um, I know that for many, uh, four years can be a struggle when you talk about the amount of time that it takes to serve as a, uh, very good school board member. Some of the things for myself that I can speak up directly, having been here four years, is the knowledge and the historic perspective that Mrs. Elder gives to everyone who, uh, works for the school district, as well as serves on our school board. Um, and oftentimes she always, and she said it again tonight, actually at the technology meeting, that oftentimes being a short gray-haired woman, um, oftentimes fades into the woodwork and many people don't see her. But I will tell you, she is a force to be reckoned with. She is one who, um, has vast knowledge and understanding, and I will tell you that if she doesn't know, she asks where she goes and finds out. And that is all you can ask for as a superintendent, superintendent of schools, is to have someone who is inquisitive, who wants to know the facts, who weighs those facts and makes her decisions based on those, um, uh, facts that have been given. And so it is with, um, great honor and pride, um, that as the superintendent of schools, I have the, uh, honor of recognizing Mrs. Catherine Elder as a school board member here for thirty years. And so with that, we have a small gift, um, to, uh, express our appreciation for that, and we would also like to get a picture of Mrs. Elder, so that we can also recognize her in our local newspapers. So, Mrs. Elder, floor, let me give you a gift first.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Swire. You're very good. I was appointed when an eighteen-year-old who thought he could do the job of the school director resigned from the board because the board had decided to engage in a win-win negotiation, which has been much talked about, much aligned, and found to be of questionable value. But that's why I was appointed, because he quit, because he couldn't take coming to all the meetings. And it's been, how many elections, seven?
Yes.
Yes, and, um, I, I also had the very great pleasure of serving for six years on the School Boards Association Board, where I learned a great deal about school boarding across the state and very many issues different and alike that face all of us. And thank you very much for the gift. I don't need the recognition, um, uh, you know, that, that's, that's fine, I didn't need that, but, um, thank you for doing it in any way.
I'd just like to say that I don't think public education has ever seen a better friend. So, um, she's a real advocate for public education and shows it in everything she does, and I congratulate her.
My third year, if you're with you. And I just want to tell you, what a honor and a privilege it is to serve with you. No, no, we, we, we get paid, so you know, you're not.
Mark it done.
We're not volunteers. I just want to tell you, it's been, it's, it's been a wonderful time, and I've learned so much from you, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be here.
And, look, can, may I just add that I would add, don't discount, uh, those numbers of years, as well as, um, all of the issues that have come through, uh, by this board in that time. And, um, the political piece alone is, um, very time-consuming and draining. Um, but, um, one of the things that I know, that you always keep at the top of, of your mindset consistently, whether I agree or I disagree with what you might say or do, and that is that you have the best interest of the students at Greater Latrobe, um, in everything you do. And as a superintendent, that is all I can ever ask for from any board member, and you exemplify that. So, um, please don't discount those thirty years.
Thank you, you're welcome. Uh, I'd like to say that at the bachelor's service, uh, someone questioned why Latrobe has a bachelor's and how we haven't. And I refer to the advice that we had always gotten from your father, and the things that we, the troubles that we have it run into because of that advice. And, uh, I went home and was going through some files and throwing up, you know, when, when your grandchildren are on vacation, you have to find something to do at times to go through the fire. And I did find something, which told you that this was your thirtieth year.
Yeah.
So that, that was interesting, I meant to mention that to you. And, um, good advice is the main thing that a solicitor can give a school district, and the Nagles have always given us great advice. And I think we give good advice as well to the other districts and to the current technologies now. Thank you very much.
We meet that.
Oh, picture.
Picture.
Oh, picture, okay. We get it now?
Yes.
Do you want to, Mrs. May, Mrs. Swire, do you want to do a picture?
Yes. Glad I didn't wear my red jacket.
I'd just like to report Dr. Lachlan.
Um, Mrs. May, you're probably aware, we're sending from Beaker, it's intending to introduce a choice plan. It's supposed to be just targeting, um, kids that were dying, there was eighty percent, um, achievement, but there's not a lot of specifics on it, and I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you. Educational planning, um, the students aren't here this evening, chances are they won't be with us, so, so, um, the enrollment report from Dr. Tepper, Tepper is item, um, one in your packet, and, um, do you have any comments at all, Dr. Tepper?
No, we're, 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 we're.
Okay. And, um, educational programs, Dr. Plan.
I have a report to you on.
Oh, thank you. Okay, um, on your agenda for next week will be the approval of the Seaton Hill Diet, uh, dietetic intern for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. And also number five, to approve extended two thousand twelve school year service agreements. And that would be the New Story School and Northwestern Human Services and Preston Ridge School for Optism. That will be an agenda item for next week. Also, um, two new, um, tuition students for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year will be on your agenda, both from Lincoln Air. And, um, on your agenda will be, uh, a resolution to approve school district affiliation agreement with California University of Pennsylvania for a five-week year period, and that's for that, of the student teaching program that we have with them. And that's all I have. Um, we'll turn it over to finance for Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. Uh, the treasures you've brought in bills will be on your agenda in two weeks, as will the veterinary transfers, which are in your packet. Um, the finance committee will be meeting on, um, the eleventh of next month, because the tour is the first Wednesday. And, uh, the finance committee meeting minutes for this month are in your packet. And insurance renewals are also in the packet, and Mr. Watson is going to introduce, and Kathy is here to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Uh, Mr. Cassidy, uh, is here from Dan Brady, our insurance company broker. He's going to, uh, we'll do where we stand, uh, today with, uh, the premiums for next week, so, turn the floor to me, Richard.
Thank you. Last couple of years, the insurance industry has had a, uh, difficult time with catastrophic losses, as you see on the news with, uh, the various, uh, losses that have occurred throughout the United States. Now, that affects everyone, affects every insurance company, you may have noticed it in your homeowner's, um, premium, or you will see it in your homeowner's premium. Uh, now, having said that, um, I'll get into the coverages, last year to this year, basically from a coverage standpoint, we haven't changed a lot. Last year, we made, uh, significant changes, this year, really not a lot of major changes. Um, as far as the building values, every year they do an appraisal update. They went from a hundred and fifty-nine to a hundred and sixty-six, about four point seven percent. And that's to keep all the buildings up to replacement costs, um, and they do that appraisal again, every year. The premium for the property went from sixty-nine to seventy-eight. Majority of that premium came from the four point seven, and then an overall rate increase that the PSBA has, has gone through. Other minor little changes with minor coverages, the majority is in those two sections. Boiler machinery, that's equipment breakdown for all the schools. The deductible is twenty-five thousand, they lowered it to twenty-five hundred. So that's across the board. So if you had a higher deductible, they're lowering that to twenty-five hundred. So it's a, a benefit. So we asked for a higher deductible, and it was, and we got back to that roughly like a two hundred dollars each. So really, there's no benefit to going back to that higher deductible, okay? Um, general liability, limits remain the same, exposures basically remain the same as well, premium fifteen-nine to sixteen-nine, or about five point nine percent. And again, that due to an overall rate increase, um, throughout the program. Now again, the overall rate increases, one because of the financial losses that the program has taken, partly also because of the pressure from every school district, especially last year. Last year, we went from three hundred and sixty-eight thousand to two hundred and forty-seven thousand. So every district, every broker is going to the PSBA and saying, "We need regular." So the, the program had to make some changes, they had to stabilize their reserve. Every insurance company needs money set aside by their claims, where they'll be downgraded by A and Best. So the PSBA made some changes, they switched some programs, underwritten through Old Republic. Old Republic has an A rating. So in order to keep the program at our A rating, we had to partner with Old Republic. So by doing that, again, it was rate changes, Old Republic said, "We're going to do that, these, this is the premium that we need to, um, take on." Now, from a standpoint of other competitors, again, every year we shop it to all the companies that are willing to write school districts. And even with the, uh, rate increases on the property liability, PSBA's program was still the most competitive from a coverage standpoint and from a pricing standpoint. Auto insurance, auto insurance is pretty straightforward, no changes from last year, um, the premium went down to point five percent. Um, the insurance company will continue the driver screening program, which protects the district from the standpoint of, you are responsible for the drivers, and you are responsible for their background checks. So the insurance company will be doing that, um, again. Workers' compensation, workers' compensation was a big item last year, we switched it from the PSBA program with, uh, Highmark. Last year, the rating factor for the district was one point three-three-seven. This year, it dropped to one point zero-two, which is, is a direct result of a three-year claim history. Those years are two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So the claim experience is getting better. As the claim experience gets better, the premium will continue to drop, okay? So the premium went from one twenty-five to one eleven. Now, that premium also includes a one point seven million dollar increase in payroll. So again, it would have been less if we were going after.
Excuse me one second, so, our overall payroll is estimated?
Uh, nothing. I, estimate, estimate payroll. Um, and, and what I would say is last year's payroll was estimated below, um, so I would say that our overall payroll was up to six hundred thousand dollars a year, going from the eleventh, twelfth, to twelfth, thirteenth school year.
And again, with all workers' comp policies, they're audited, you only pay actual, um, payroll. So if, if the figures are wrong, then it'll be adjusted. Now, two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve, current policy year which ends in July, um, the Highmark offered a dividend plan, a return premium based on your claims. So as it stands, as it stood Friday, there would be a six thousand five hundred seventeen dollar return or premium. Now, that is subject to ch, to change, we have two open claims that are pending. So that could eliminate that, depending on how these claims, um, work out. Now, for two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, they are offering another dividend program. You start off fresh in July, the percentage return is anywhere from zero percent, if we have a bad here, or twenty-one percent. And I've included a, a schedule with the percentages and with the return premium. Now, again, with the implementation of the modified duty program, return to work, safety committee, uh, claims monitoring, loss control visits, we should continue to see a reduction in that experience rating. If nothing changes between now and July first, we will see a reduction in the experience rating factor. So from next year, I, I see that factor coming down. At this point, I can't calculate what that will be, but next year, it will come down. School leaders' air submissions through the PSBA, this is one where they may, had to make changes. This is where Old Republic is offering their A rating behind this program, because of the losses that they took, A and Best was looking at possibly downgrading it. So they switched it, and Old Republic is using their A rating to back this. However, the school board trust is still monitoring, still controlling everything. They just partnered with Old Republic for this coverage. School claim service, claim service is still going to be handled by the same group, so we're not changing any of that. Now, what they are offering that's new is like a triage program, if there are potential claims or if there's potential claims, they're handling it as a triage, making sure that any decisions that are made, you can call them with hotline and ask questions ahead of time, before a decision is made, if you do this, then that. So that is new that they're offering. Now, the premium for the, um, school leaders went from fourteen-eight to seventeen-seven. Now, having said that, all of these premiums, we are still going back and forth with underwriters and underwriting supervisors to try to get additional credits. They still have made changes to the program, as of today, we just got a new endorsement, they increased the defense cost limit from one million to two million on this college, school leader. So they changed, they increased it from one million to two million. So again, they're seeing some rate increases, but they're trying to improve the coverage, um, where they can. The umbrella call, uh, umbrella coverage, again, through PSBA, and again, with one of their partners, Old Republic was the partner last year. From a pricing standpoint, uh, everything was flat, and from a coverage standpoint, coverage is the same. So it will drop down over the school leaders. When we shop the market with other carriers, other carriers' umbrella, they do not want to cover over the school leaders' air submissions.
Can we go back to the, the air's emissions, just, that's twenty percent, right?
Now, um, I have last, last year.
Last year was a million dollars, and this year is two million?
That's, that's the, from the half of the average comparison, it's fourteen-seven. So from a, it's still, last year's one million was at fourteen. Last year, we changed it from five to one. So that's not, we're not, we're not comparing one to five, so at one, it's still that increase. Now, we're not, they haven't finalized the pricing, but as of today, again, we've gone back today, as probably every school district has, to try to get regular. But because of the downward pressures from the last couple of years and the claims that they've had, I, I doubt if we're going to see anything, any rate reduction that's substantial.
Rick, when you talk to them about the claims that they're dealing with, you're, you're talking about other districts on the overall, so, like, we're not.
Yeah, no, from, from.
Make sure the board knows that.
And they, they rate accordingly. So other districts, if you, if they've had exposures, obviously they're seeing higher, um, rate increases. So, so if we don't have any problems from a claim standpoint, individual district, the program has, so they, in order to strengthen their reserves, they're taking an overall rate increase. Now, last year, they started, those individual districts that are having problems, they are seeing much higher, uh, increases.
Is this triage program their answer to dealing with that to some degree?
Yes. It's meant to help.
But it is twenty percent, no matter how you weigh this. It's an odd for, for E and O to go up twenty percent in one year.
But, and again, part of it is using the, having to go to Old Republic. Last year, it was underwritten through PSBA.
I understand.
So going to Old Republic, they said, "We're going to underwrite this, this is the rating that we need."
And there's no boutique activity combined with air submissions from?
No, no individual, like, we go to other carriers that offer the package.
Excellent.
No one was offering anything with the coverage or the price. Now, I hate to say that in an open forum, because we try to negotiate with the companies, so, not that they have a monopoly on the marketplace, but they're getting to the point where, because of the losses, other carriers don't want to jump into it. And if you see on my list, um, at the back, shows the different companies that we've gone to, that are in the market, and there's very few. So with that, and with the losses, they're saying, "This is the rate increase we need to stabilize the program."
Because I know from being there at the beginning of PSBA, that that was one area that they always specialized in. It's amazing that it went up that much, and that they had to go to Old Republic.
Right.
To me, it's amazing.
And again, part of that, and, and this is from an industry standpoint, what they're telling us, A and Best is looked, looks at every insurance company. A and Best, kind of like a credit, a credit bureau, what they were trying to avoid was being downgraded, because of the financial stability of the program. So not having to publicize that, to say, "Okay, they're taking a downgrade," they had to partner with another company that had that A rating and stabilized the program.
Just, and I like it, but.
Now, again, these numbers are not final, but based on our discussion with them, I, I doubt there's going to be anything significant. Any, any other questions on that? Student accident, um, student accident, this change, the one change that the student accident had, this is outside of PSBA program. We went to another company and they had a program. The benefit that they had was a lifetime benefit, however, they've removed that lifetime benefit. So now the, the dollar limit is the same as, let's say, other carriers. So we thought, okay, there'll be other companies that will be competitive. The closest quote that we got was thirty-seven hundred dollars higher. Trial accident, that's a three-year term, that hasn't changed. Crime policy, that's the same, that hasn't changed. Public officials, funds, that hasn't changed, that's the same. The cyber, cyber liability, uh, this is the, going into the thirty year, the cyber liability is the protection that you have if there's breach of security, um, data breaches, privacy, if, if information gets out and a taxpayer sues as a result, medication requirements that are, that are required by law, this is where that coverage protects you. Then in, in summary, last year to this year, last year's price was two forty-seven, this year, two forty-five. So overall, the price, the pricing is down, but again, you see those line items where it went up. The workers' comp, whereas in the past, that's where we were spending money, that's where we're seeing a savings. Um, so again, we continue to recommend the PSBA's program for everything except the workers' compensation. We shop the workers' compensation again, I listed the different companies. The closest competitor was the PSBA's program, which had to be taken out of the PSBA program, and Old Republic is underwriting it. They were a hundred and forty-eight thousand. So again, that was another program that they had to take out and had it underwritten through Old Republic.
Richard, could I just add something? Uh, just to remind the board, last year, um, we met as a finance committee, and we reviewed all of our coverages that we had, all the coverage levels that we had. And we came back and made recommendations on areas, plus we made adjustments to help to control those premium costs. And one of the changes that we, we actually recommended was the workers' comp, and that was the switch from PSBA to Highmark, which was, we've been with PSBA for a long, long time, but through the negotiation process, we determined that Highmark could, you know, provide the same level of coverage at a reduced cost. So we did do that thorough review of coverages last year, and we did make some adjustments to those coverage levels, um, that we felt comfortable with. Uh, this year, Richard, you did shop those again, as you stated, and you and I spoke, I believe, last week, and just to reiterate, I did ask him about the property liability and the, uh, the E and O, because of the significant increases, and, and as Richard stated, he's continuing to have dialogue, but, um, uh, the, uh, the competitive prices that he received, um, these are the, the best prices that he was quoted for these, this level of coverage.
How far off were we short on the, on the, on the year before?
Uh, you know, the total is about, between about a half million dollars. Um, you know, I'll be honest, last year when we were giving the pricing for the workers' comp, I used a little bit more of a conservative estimate to try and get drawn as a little better. I mean, we will reconcile that at the end of the year, we have to require to do that, so there will be adjustment based to, to actuals. Um, you know, the number that was submitted this year, uh, you could argue it might be, might be a little high, and I could possibly.
No, I know, we'll get back to that, I'm just trying to figure out the swing, and so.
Yeah, and, and, I just, I just look for my report very quickly, there's actually the adjustment in, in wages and. There's actually the adjustment in, in wages, and it's difficult because you're not comparing apples to apples. Like, it's, it, the overall increase in salaries is about $500,000, but we've had some retirements. We've had some positions that we aren't replacing. We've had some positions that we're not replacing with a, you know, maybe a, a full-time professional position is being replaced with a school position. So it, it, it's a little fluid, but I would say, on average, our wages go up anywhere between $600,000 and $700,000 a year. Um, again, those then get adjusted back based on retirements. And I forgot to say at the beginning of the presentation, the detail of what Richard's looking at is in your packet. Um, just received that today, so I emailed it out to you. It is in your packet. Please read through it. Um, if there are any questions that you might have before the 26th, get back to me. And Richard and I will continue to try and have some dialogue with the carriers to see if there's some flexibility in their, their, their complete estimate, so I'd love to be after.
All right. Any other, any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for commenting, Richard. And, um, we will also have on the agenda, in addition to all the returns, we know we reenacted the Act 511 taxes and the reenactment of Mr. Palmer's favorite, per capita taxes. And, um, I'm going to pull out of order here, uh, number nine, which is number five in your packet, the Dr. Mrs. William D. Stavisky Fund Grant. And then the other parts of the, this part of the agenda, I'll let Ms. Watson take over. But if you look at your agenda, you'll see the proposals for the use of those funds from the Stavisky, um, fund. And, uh, we'll be approving them in two weeks. Okay. We'll get back to it.
Great. Now, you can get this together. And just to, just to touch, take a step back very quickly, the, the Act 511 taxes, just so everybody's on the same page, they're, these aren't new taxes, they're taxes that we, we, um, we implement every year. The Act 511 are the real estate transfer tax, the earned income tax, the per capita tax, and the local services tax. And then, uh, the local services is the, um, uh, we get $5 of that, and you call the occupation privilege tax, and then there's the emergency tax. Uh, it was increased in immunity to $22 in this past year. We, we only receive $5 of that, and that, that will stay, stay the same.
I hate that one, too.
Yeah, I hate that one, too.
It's a little...
So per capita tax is sort of the head tax, and that is anybody over the age of 11 is the $5 that, uh, you, you require to pay.
Just for breathing.
Yes.
I got that.
Um, so that, that is item number five. And then the reenactment of per capita tax, uh, that is the 679, that again, is the another $5 that you pay for everybody over the age of 18, so nobody that pays $10 for the, uh, per capita 679 and the per capita 511. Uh, but again, those aren't new. I just want to declare, to point out exactly what those are, so we implement those again for next year. Uh, the next item on there is the extension of Section 125 cash benefit. Um, we offer a newer payout to any individual who does not choose to take our healthcare plan. Um, it is 50% of the, uh, the premium, so if somebody elects not to take our healthcare coverage, they are eligible for reimbursement of 50% of those costs. And there is a cap on that of $300, and that has been in place for, for many years in the district. So we just need to, uh, remat, uh, that, uh, that motion. Um, number eight is authorize the homestead, farmsteads, this is the gain money that we can receive. Uh, the dollar amount is, is obviously exactly the same as it's been in prior years. Uh, the amount of relief that our, our property taxpayers receive in early April School District, uh, we're getting a, a chunk, uh, the grand total is $753,638.98. And then what you do is you take that and divide it out equally amongst all of the approved homesteads and farmsteads. And what that equates to is everybody's, uh, real estate tax bill will go down by assessed value of $1,177, which equates to, um, $89.44. And it's about the same as it, it has been over the past several years, so there's no big, uh, change to that amount. Any questions about homesteads that, that it's been in place for the past several years? Uh, the, uh, I'm going to skip over nine because that's the, uh, this, number ten, the adoption of 2012, 13 operating budget. Um, just wanted to make a comment, so the finance committee, uh, met on June 6th. Um, we had further discussion regarding to the budget. Uh, not much has changed, to be quite honest. We haven't received any new information, uh, you know, new, new final information from the state. Um, so basically, what the finance committee would like to recommend is to reduce, uh, what we presented in May, which was the proposed final budget, down to, um, $48,959,697. That takes it from a 1.64 million increase down to a 1.5 million increase. The committee was comfortable in making that recommendation because of the discussions that have been going on at the state level, particularly by the Senate, they introduced the bill to the House, um, and part of that bill, uh, included the, uh, the reenactment or the, uh, bringing back the accountability block grant, which we will, we believe, we hope, will happen, which will generate additional revenue, uh, state revenue for the district. So, you know, the finance committee developed that. At this point in time, we'd recommend a 1.5 million increase for that $48,959,000 budget line item. Um, the 1.5, just to, there's a report in your packet, but just to state it again, uh, for the average homeowner, that would impact them by about $38 a year. Uh, so, um, just to note that, you know, the budget is still calling for a projected increase of around 3% to our operating expenditures. Uh, of that 3%, well over 50% of our increase is to Peasers. Uh, the Peasers, that increase, uh, went from 8.65% to 12.36%, which was about 46% increase to that particular line item. Uh, so it was well over $800,000. So that, that honestly makes up the majority of our expenditure increase. Um, just a couple other things I wanted to note, this still includes us using a portion of our fund balance. Uh, we'll use, uh, roughly between $620,000 and $660,000 more fund balance for three line items. Uh, those line items include the technology, uh, infrastructure that we, we discussed and approved at the previous meeting, as well as some curriculum purchases, textbook purchases, and the one closing cost that we talked about. So we, the proposal still includes that. Um, some of the...
Just so we're clear, that's a one-time, it's not a recurring expense with buying infrastructure.
God, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Yeah, just, uh, just want to reiterate, there's a one-time, non-recurring expenditures, and that's, that's why we are comfortable utilizing fund balance for that. Once those, we, we, we have those expenditures, they will not be there next year. Um, just a couple of the other notes that we, we kicked around with the finance, you know, some of the concerns is, uh, future budget years, and we believe to, or continue to plan for those years. Uh, the, the Peasers, uh, is projected to increase to 16.69% next year, which calls for another $525,000 more than we need. Um, you know, we've discussed that we have some capital projects that need to get done. Uh, we have about 1.170 million dollars in capital assets, but we only have about $300,000 capital reserve fund. Um, the uncertainty with the state budget and with Act One, you know, we've thought that it's in the best interest of the district to continue to take long-term. Uh, that, that, those were some of the, the points that I wanted to highlight and went into the, to the recommendation of the committee. So there's a report in your packet. Um, it's also noted that we approved, uh, the budget on the 26th, that'll include approving the salary adjustments, uh, the bids included in your packet, and those are all based on contracts that are, that are in existence. Are there any questions about the budget?
There is one addition that I'd like to remind the board members. Back in January, when we decided not to, um, go for a referendum, that, another thing that we didn't do was go for exceptions. So that would, if we had been granted those exceptions, which we have every reason to believe we would have, our ability to raise taxes would have gone up from the beginning with 1.64. And so we're often criticized by people who say that Act One didn't really help because the school boards always raised taxes by as much as they possibly could have. And we're absolutely not doing that. So in addition to not raising taxes as much as we could have, we also use the fund balance amount. So we're doing what we can to provide for the future of the school district with the upcoming Peasers raises, which is a huge thing on our horizon. But we're also trying to take care of the individual welfare of the taxpayers in our district by keeping taxes as low as we possibly can while looking for that huge mountain that we all have to get around in a short time.
Right. And, and this, to think back on the exceptions, while we, we adopted the resolution, we weren't able to, um, actually apply for the exceptions. We didn't pay more to see what we would have been eligible for, and it would have been about 1.1 and 1/4, additional 1 and 1/4 would be on that. Um, and, and the Peasers rates are projected to go up to, you know, well over 29%. So it's going to continue to, to climb over the next several years. Uh, the, the next item on there, and I'm going to give, we can come back to talk more about the budget if you'd like, but I just want to piggyback, uh, or they, they kind of go together as the millage levy. Um, so once we go off the budget on, uh, June 26th, we will also have to enact the, the adjusted millage rate. So that's, that's what we're going to do.
And those things, um, you will notice that we do them in two separate resolutions. The first is the operating budget, and the second is the millage levy. I, I've got a problem with, I think one ought to be before the other instead of the other way around, but that's the way it's done. And once those are done, then we have a form that has to be sent to the state saying what we did with all of that, and that has to all be done at the end of the fiscal year.
Exactly. And we also have to notify the county of, of the tested rate protectors. So are there any questions? Um, and again, we will ask for approval, uh, at the June 26th meeting, but if something comes up between now and then, please, if necessary, contact me, or any of the members of the finance committee, uh, if they have further discussion.
I'm pleased that you and the committee worked to get it back down to that 1.5 million that, that, I'm sure there was a struggle.
Okay, that's it.
It feels a little bit...
The, using the part of the tack of the fund balance was what did it for us. And, and we can legitimately do that because it's a one-time infrastructure purchase with those funds. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Property is fine, Mrs. Kozak.
Let me just, let me sell them at 599.
Oh, no, I, I just want you to put that in the packet. We'll be ready to vote on that next week. Is there anything that makes me particularly, there's a fair...
Uh, there's a committee that meets, um, Mr. Mears, myself, um, Mr. Ogneff, Mrs. Golden, and Mrs. Naples, and reviews the applications. I think we had, I'm going to say 10, just going to guess 10, um, applications this year, um, from all of the teachers within the district. Um, these four, um, were selected as being, um, projects that, um, six, excuse me, thank you, Mrs. Golden, is a little cute sound in the audience, um, were supported. It's a total amount of $2,000 if you add up those amounts. Some of them requested more and didn't receive the whole amount. But if you read over what these six projects are, they really are great endeavors that our teachers are, um, moving forward with. Um, so we appreciate your applications, and we appreciate, obviously, the dollars that come into those programs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kozak. Okay. Um, we met, the property is fine, we met on June 7th, and you'll notice our minutes are in the packet, so I think we're six. Mr. Moser, would you like to discuss the, uh, the contracts that we're discussing?
Um, we just...
The information.
We, um, just, other than the architect was there, we discussed some, just, what, um, they're, they're working on the bid documents at this time, um, and, uh, bringing the final touches on...
Right. We, we discussed, and we, and we also need to, um, some, some interactive, right, that he's working on. We will also be awarding the IUCR purchasing bid for easily. And our next property is fine, maybe it will be on July 12th, that's...
Thank you, Mrs. Kozak. Student activities in recreation, Dr. Lottman.
Yeah, her agenda item for next, um, meeting, that through the courts, admitting physical examinations, and for the dental examiners. And then item number seven in your packet is the athletic committee meeting minutes, and that is next meeting, not next meeting to be announced.
Thank you. Um, Dr. George is not here, so I can take that. Um, nature of unity parks and recreation minutes is item number eight in the packet. Um, I don't think there's anything from that, I'll need to calm down, but I'll take a look at it. Also, the 2012, 2013 free and reduced, uh, pricing help program, um, that would be in the agenda, agenda items for next week, and those prices are never going up.
It's actually the price of number six.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, the national school lunch program for 2012, 2013 needs to be approved next week, it will be on your agenda, as is the national school breakfast program for 2012, 2013, and those are yearly approvals. Um, we will also be asked, uh, to approve a professional services agreement between GLSD and Land River Valley Hospital, um, at Southern Health, Land River Hospital, for physician services at a cost of $1,500. Um, increase school breakfast prices, uh, district-wide by 10 cents, increase elementary lunch prices by 15 cents, and increase secondary lunch, uh, lunch prices by 10 cents, and that will also be in the agenda item.
I, I'd just like to say that, um, Jillian Lloyd came to the finance committee meeting and explained once again, if you remember last year when we were talking about the budget, the, uh, what's it called, the Child Nutrition Reauthorization for Healthy Under Free Kids Act, um, it mandates that school lunches have more fruit and vegetables in them. And fresh fruits and vegetables are more expensive than the other things that might or might not have been served in school lunches in the past. So in order to make equity across the board, this act mandated that the prices go up each year. And, uh, so this, this choice to raise prices for school lunches is happening across the country and, and not necessarily something that our district or our food service would have chosen to do. But in order to keep participating in the federal program, we have to do it. And, and those are, these are the, uh, choices, and, and Jillian gave all of us the list in that, yeah, that's in our packet, on the back of the first page, showing you what all the districts in Westmoreland County do about pricing for both breakfasts and lunches.
If I could just add to that, uh, if you read the cover letter, it explains that we're required to minimum increase the pricing by 1 cent. So, uh, that's her recommendation, 10 cents, you're at the 15th, uh, to meet the 80% requirement as well as to keep us, um, you know, relative, uh, uh, same ballpark as some of the other school districts that are shown on the...
Great. Thank you. And I think that, and it's helped Dr. George. Okay. In a unit liaison, um, I was unable to attend that meeting on Friday, too, because we had a work meeting for that night, and it's also, the meeting for tonight also, this will be the meeting, so I'm sorry that it missed too, that was a rub. But, um, item number 10 is minutes from that meeting, and I'm, um, I love them, and I can see nothing, uh, that goes against that, so you can read them on your own. Um, and then as that retort, then we'll go to the EWCQC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Kozak.
Yes, and just for information, summary, there's the actions required. Why you have 12, or you have 11?
Thank you, Mrs. Kozak.
Oh, and also the skin recognition sound like this, love. Students look wonderful, they're very respectful, and all is good.
Thanks, you've looked around.
Thank you, Bill.
First class, bud.
And it's always nice to see the kind of scholarship awards that young kids are getting and, and the, the kind of credits at the new college that they've already... and the kind of credits at community college that they already go up with their graduation. And tour and technology education is it.
But we're not harsh.
No.
Back to Mrs. Alder for the board policy, P S B A liaison.
On board policy, I've moved for adoption of resolution number two, five, three, to adopt the permissions to board policy number eight, fifteen, use of technology resources and acceptable use of the internet.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded with the adopt resolution number two hundred and fifty-three. Any discussion on the motion?
I just remind the board that the reason that we're doing this tonight is that it needs to be in the handbook, which is being given to the students. And we need this to be done sooner rather than later. We can't wait two weeks to do it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two fifty-three, please say aye. Aye. If anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously.
And as far as the P S B A liaison, I would recommend to all of you, as the good thing to read is the bullying issue, which I think that's what this issue of the P S B A bulletin is over and over again. There are all kinds of looks at why bullying is something that has to be dealt with in schools. And it's a problem both for those who are bullied and those who do the bullying. And that's all in there. And then also, if you read Mike Venn's article about D Y O D, you'll see that, that that's something that is being done all over the state. And it's recommended as a way to save money for school districts. And that, that is true, that certainly is something that it does. But it also makes the use of technology something that is more personal to each student and something that all the way through their thirteen years of school, they're very used to doing. And I think it's a good move given where society is.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Transportation, Dr. Lottman.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Smith. And this, on our May thirty meeting, we have another thirteen-year package. As you are aware, we're here out from the contract pressing for a student for some information on a two-bell schedule. They are not very forthcoming, so we're in the process of reporting our E. We're gonna start talking to other vendors to see if we can get some feedback. And more on that later. Our next meeting is scheduled for November twenty-seventh at three p.m. June.
You're moving ahead a little, quite. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. As you all can see, our, we eliminated from last meeting, our task inside number fourteen. Our next meeting is, has been changed to July seventeen at six p.m. at C S C. And if I can ask the disciplines to give you all an update on where we are with the D Y O D participation.
Yes, we basically finished up our registration for our incoming sophomores, which is the group that we are doing with this year. And we had a total of approximately ninety students participate in the laptop, we can serve a fee option, which is similar to what we've been doing, although we've changed the model of the laptop and raised the fee. We have ninety-three participants in the K to O program. And those are split fairly evenly between the two models of laptops that we offer. Forty-nine for the X one thirty model and fifty-two for the E four thirty model. And then we have a hundred and eighteen participants for the D Y O D option. So it was a very, you know, nice even split among the three options. So moving forward, that looks like that was, those were frequent choices to offer them and meeting the needs that our students would have. So we're excited to continue to go forward with that.
Did they have to tell you what kind of device they would be bringing if they grow up?
I did ask them to report that to me. Most of them reported some type of a laptop, which I encouraged just based upon some of the work that they would possibly be doing. I have just a handful of students that are awfully different in some type of a tablet device. And then a few that have not made a choice yet, they're still shopping for a.
And they're still.
I didn't have any, but we made it, they wanted to work.
And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's resignation.
There are quite a few resignations on the agenda for next week. And they are all important to the district, and I do not want to make light of any of those. However, we have two longtime head coaches that have retired, and I think that's the word to be used here. The first is Mr. Kovalson, who has been the head softball coach for nine years, I believe. And he has some plans to move to North Carolina and participated in his daughter's last year at Tobler College, who's playing softball there. So some exciting plans for Coach Kovalson. The other is certainly notable, and that is Coach Billard, who has, who retired from the school district as a teacher a few years ago. But just this year has retired as our head wrestling coach. There's a nice article in the TRO Bulletin about his dedication and service to the students here in the school district. As all of you know, he was inducted into the wrestling, Pennsylvania Wrestling Hall of Fame just recently, a few weeks ago. Certainly milestones for Coach Billard and for all of the people here. But specifically for them, we appreciate the dedication and service to the students here at Greater TRO. On the top of the next page, we will have some personnel appointments. Number five should be deleted from the agenda, the administrative intern position. These are tentative. We have been doing interviews. Credit to Dr. Teppert and the team as far as moving forward with the interview process. It's been quite lengthy and, and, but obviously very needed. So hopefully we will have recommendations to bring to the board for approval on the twenty-seventh. Number C, Rachel Sergi. And this was actually a, not a mistake, but normally that position is divided between two people. Ms. Sergi did the entire job the entire year. So basically it's approving her going backward to get that additional pay for the other half of the position. So that's why it's noted as such. We also hope to have some support personnel appointments at the next meeting for you to approve. They are listed there. These are all tentative. The softball coach, which we're just going to be voting on, we have applications and the process is closing relatively soon. We have to advertise it for X number of days. We will be doing interviews, contacting the athletic committee and the board to move forward with those. So that one's kind of tentative. I'm not sure that we're going to have a name or not. If we don't, we would obviously move forward and have a name for July for, actually, hopefully, both of those positions that I just referenced. In addition, we ask the board to approve the classified personnel hourly rates that are listed here. Please note that the substitute positions of secretary, custodian, and food service employees are not changing. We are not recommending a change for those. The others, the part-time, four-hour secretary, the mail delivery, and the student summer workers, not the student summer workers, but those two, the mail delivery and the part-time, is a twenty-five cents increase from last year. I would ask that the board move on resolution number two fifty-four, which is the hiring of student summer workers. The third name should be Adam, not Alan Ferguson. But I'd ask that the board move on that resolution this evening so that we can actually get these students up and working as quickly as possible.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number two hundred and fifty-four. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number two hundred and fifty-four, please say aye. Aye. If anyone opposed, admit that motion passes unanimously.
And also, we would ask next week that the board approve the benefit and pay plans for the secretary, secretarial, excuse me, and clerical personnel, the personal assistants, and the computer technology personnel, as well as the classroom assistants, health room assistants, ESL instructors, interpreters, and suspension supervisors. That's effective July first of two thousand and twelve. And also next week, we would ask the board to approve the twenty-one teachers here, who we are asking that the board grant tenure. As I say, every, every year to the board and to the public, tenure is not granted necessarily by the school district. It is awarded by the state. Us voting on it is more perfunctory. But just so you understand that it is a process of the state, not necessarily the school district in that sense. I also would ask that the board give permission to the superintendent to realign the staff. This is an annual agenda item that we ask the board move on every June. As far as my report, Mrs. Kozar mentioned very nicely about the E W C T C senior ceremony that was held in the end of May. It was a wonderful ceremony, but I want to mention the graduation ceremony that occurred here at the high school for our seniors on June first. It was really a wonderful program ceremony. It always is. But this year, we, number one, had, I think, a record number of seniors who graduated, at least since I've been here, three hundred and fifty-three. And it was very clearly evident by the fact that just about every seat in the auditorium was filled. And if we wanted to raise some money, we could have sold them for more. And that's a joke. But it really was a, I just realized I was on TV and I thought. But I made note of the graduation ceremony because as much as I joke with Mr. Lucassio and Mr. Krailic, the punch and cookies routine for the last two weeks of school is pretty much a staple for every evening that we're here. And that is pretty much every night. So I congratulate and honor the high school administration for doing that. But in addition, since the graduation ceremonies, I've had many comments regarding Mr. Lucassio's speech and how he was able to memorize all of that information. So I think I would be remiss to not mention it this evening, that it was a very nice comment. And I'm not sure that everyone got it. So I want to make sure that everyone's clear. Yes, it was to recognize the things that this class is known for, but the beginning of it was the most key. And that was the fact that, yes, this class has made A Y P as far as P S S A scores. But isn't it amazing, all of the additional things that this class and other classes who come through Greater TRO are known for? That was the point that I think Mr. Lucassio was trying to make. Yes, to honor the class, but also to get a little dig into the state system of assessment that we put on a pedestal every year as far as making sure we make A Y P. So a thank you to Mr. Lucassio on that speech. And I got the true message that came out. I'm not sure that everyone else did. So anyhow, that concludes my report, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Swiger. Any other business to come before the board this evening?
I'd love to say that it's fine experience that this school board and this school district is also far better than adequate.
Nice comment. Anybody else? Anything to come before the board? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you tomorrow at twenty-second.